Which is a major modification, special permit request. 420 to 428 Newbury Ford Turnpike. The owner and representative of the Bridge Switch Bay Glass is Sandy Patrick. I have to read the legal notice, which has been advertised for two straight weeks. I believe in both papers, right?
In the town con.
In the town con. According to the Nassau General Laws, Chapter 48, the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw and the Raleigh Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Raleigh Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, June 5th, 2013, at 7:30 in the conference room at the Town Hall Annex, 39 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. Relative to applications for approval of an amended site plan and approval of an amended special permit, the applicant owner is 420 Newbury Ford Turnpike LLC, Raleigh, Mass. The applications for approval of an amended site plan and amended special permit are for a proposed 21,000 square foot expansion of existing building number two located at 420 Newbury Ford Turnpike, and 12,000 square feet expansion of existing building number three located at 428 Newbury Ford Turnpike, Raleigh, Mass, and so on assessors map 18, block three and block three dash one. Drainage structures for the proposed expansions would be located on a portion of what is now assessors map 18, block five dash 21 dash 1B. The applications for approval of an amended site plan and amended special permit include plans, three sheets as described in the application, prepared by Meridian Associates, Beverly, Mass, dated April 22nd, 2013. The applications, plans, and documents are on file with the Raleigh Planning Board and are available for public inspection at the Raleigh Planning Board Office Town Hall hearings, 39 Central Street during public office hours. Curtis Bryant, Chairman. So the hearings opened, we're waiting for the engineer for Meridian Associates, Charlie Weir. Sandy, do you want to say anything, or do you want us to give something?
I think that we're here to attend the public hearing, address any comments that Mike made, and ask you folks to approve our application pending engineering review of the drainage calculations, which Larry Gray has not completed yet. But I'd like to get your approval with that stipulation that we'll do whatever it takes to get Charlie and Larry on the same page. Certainly you've done this many times in the past, so...
That's correct.
It shouldn't be a problem. But I would like to get on with it and be able to stop my process. I mean, I really can't be releasing foundation people and structural steel people to start their process without your approval.
All right, thank you. And I should have announced our planning board review consultant, Larry Graham is also here in attendance. And I also, and he'll be, Larry, like you said, you don't have the drainage comments. And I guess part of the purview of the planning board here is to take any information based on the entire, I guess we're gonna call it office park now, or industrial park, because the entire park now is open for review. So I'll take any comments from planning board members. But the, this particular area is for expansion in the rear of the property on some of the last buildings.
Yes.
Yeah. If there are any abutters present, you can take any comments from the abutters as well.
Mr. Chairman, the plans are right there if you wanted to, need to put the plans out so that at least the abutters could look to see what is being done.
Thanks. Take your help before I ruin your system.
Sure, I wasn't in the abut when this process started, but I think I am now because it's practice of the Trudell property by...
Well, I'd like to say one thing about this. You know, as you may recall, the only abut that can see this property, or this area of the property was Dan Graham, and you have a letter from him stating that he had no issues with it.
Yeah, we do have that on record.
Yeah. I mean, there are abutters, I don't know if there's anybody here, but in this case, other than Dan Graham, the abutters damn near are a quarter of a mile away. I mean, it's, it would be the same as somebody's living room being where we are and the building being constructed where the fire station is. That's about the distance.
Right, and that is a result because actually you created your own buffer in the back end.
Yes.
There was an abut, I wish I could remember her name, she was on, or she was, this is a couple of years ago, on Route 1, who, I guess you'd call it a complaint, she submitted a complaint to us about the lack of landscaping between her and one of your, I'm gonna talk about this new proposed building, so one of the buildings, sorry. So, you know, so I think, she's the one back in the woods there with the one building?
Uh, no, she's on Route 1, that she's on, yeah. I think it's the first house on Route 1.
Well...
That's why I meant on Route 1, but she...
There's an existing, there's a steel frame up now to building under construction, the one that's closest to the street, which would be the closest to the four houses that are along Route 1.
Right.
If you go, if you go back and look, the plantings and so forth that we agreed to do with the planning board, when those permits were issued, has been done.
Well, that was gonna be my question, if everything's been done according to the plan.
It's been done.
Right.
Of course, there's construction going on there right now, and in the winter, when the leaves are down...
Yeah.
There's a, there's a sightline there, that's, that's the closest residential area, those four houses.
How far away is that?
She was the first house, I believe.
Right. That was, that belonged to Pacillas, who, wasn't Arthur Pacillas, I forget what the guy's name was, the first name, but he was very vocal at the approval process of that expansion.
Oh, right, I remember that. Was Arthur Pacillas?
Is this, was it Arthur?
Or Paul?
No. No. He owned the furniture store, and that's the way it goes. He's moved off and, and his son's died unfortunately, but, I mean, those, those people bought that property without, without, without knowing that they were alongside a piece of commercial property.
My only question was whether you've done all the landscaping for any plant, that was the only question.
Do we have that anywhere?
The answer to that question is yes.
Trent, do we have that?
You have what?
Showing...
John and Eva.
Showing the landscape? Charlie, do you have?
John and Eva.
Yep.
Do we have, do we have what we're talking about?
I can tell you what, what, what we're talking about, what Cliff is referring to is there is a drawing someplace that shows a line of evergreens along the edge of the parking lot, right, that screened that house and the next house.
When did those go in?
They went in back when we first developed the rough site work, so, I mean, those things have been in for three years.
None of them have died, they're all...
Three years. They have died, and they've been replanted several times.
It does happen, they don't water them. So they have been replanted?
Yes.
When's the last time they were replanted? Just trying to see if they've got, um, growth from that.
They were replanted very recently, I mean, this year.
This year?
Oh, yeah.
This spring?
This spring, yeah.
Are they doing okay?
With the, with the, as we, as we're now completing that building six...
Yeah.
There was some reconfiguration in that area, some of those, some of those trees have been moved around from where the original position, because when we put them in, we were just, we did it to meet the requirements of the permit, not necessarily to, we hadn't really totally worked out where some of the parking lot areas and so forth were. So they've actually got moved around four or five feet in this direction, four or five feet in that direction, to conform what, what you now see there now as the very, is the rough parking lots. I mean, that area's gonna be completed now over the next few months, the building will be completed, all the parking areas will be completed, further drawings.
Has there been any further content?
Nothing, I'm working on it.
Looks pretty good down here.
Well, we have time, I mean, you know, it's, I don't, we're not gonna wrap it up tonight, but maybe very soon in the next meeting, or thereabouts, and we're trying to just...
Well, as I said, I would ask...
Wait for Larry's thing, yeah, so...
We, you know, I went away from the last meeting with the, the notion that you folks felt we needed to have a public hearing to hear any issues, comments from the public, and somebody mentioned the planning board and so forth, and that was really it. So, as I said, I'd like to get this process started.
And give, and give a chance also, just for our reviewing, just to kinda look at in total. So Larry, Charlie, go for it.
Yeah, sorry for the lateness of...
No, not that.
Um, I can give the...
Now, who you are?
Yeah, Charlie Weir, Meridian Associates. So they give this project, or, okay. So, I'll be brief, since I gave the presentation two weeks ago.
Right, and Larry's here to late, so...
And Larry, sorry, before as well, so essentially, we were adding two buildings. I also have, if you wanna see it, I do have the overall, I actually misstated what the square footage was at the last hearing, I think I said it was like 140, 150, I was off by about 100,000 square feet. It's actually about 240,000 square feet of...
An aggregate of all the buildings?
Yeah, right, the aggregate of all the buildings, and we're proposing...
How many buildings again?
Seven.
Total of seven are permitted. This is number six that's being completed now.
Right.
We're talking about additions on two buildings that have already been completed. There, there's one more permitted that may not ever get built.
Right, it's actually attached.
And that would be L.B.? You've told us that, right?
I, I think it's 40,000 square feet.
Forty, forty, yeah.
I'm not even sure it's that.
But we did, we did another, Charlie pulled out another drawing that we had that, that kind of, the other sense I got the other night was that some of the new members didn't, might not really realize...
They want an overview.
How big, yeah, an overview, how big the place was.
Yeah, Chris, Steve, this is overview of the entire business plan.
Yeah, originally Sandy, originally Sandy bought, I think, I think the line was, yeah, the line was right about here, the original property that he purchased was there. We did, that's, that was the first building, that was the home of the Switch Bay Glass. And then he continued to expand the building, put up, building number two and number three were approved, and those were put up. And then he purchased land all the way over here, all the way over to Weathersfield. We took and we resubdivided that, and we got, at that time, and he also made a deal with Trudell and did a land swap and picked up some, some land back in this area. So, at that point, we came back after he acquired those, and we came up with building four, which is right in this location, which is actually, you can see is actually the additions pretty small. And then five and six, which is under construction, and seven was built quite a while ago. And at the same time, subdivision broke off, one, two, three lots, which were all accessible, those were all accessible via a private common drive which accesses those three residential lots that are up there in the site. So, and those are still, Sandy still owns those, I know he's, he's been trying to sell those recently, if you know anybody who wants to buy three lots. So, and now he's, he has taken ownership of the Trudell lot, and we may, we've done some soil testing out in the area, though I don't wanna say too much, I think Sandy's thinking about either combining this front portion of the lot with this lot, or if we can, if we can find some soil testing, maybe we'll even put another residential lot in there. But the intention is, is to subdivide that front portion, make that residential, and then subdivide this back portion and make it part of the two commercial lots that are here in the front. So I think, is that...
That's, that's pretty much it. I mean, buying the Trudell property simplified my life, and it allows me to now propose to you folks that I build those, those commercial additions right onto the zoning line.
Right, which is, which is here and here. So you can see that it's, I think they, they total about, I think it was 33,000 square feet, so I think it's about 15% increase. And again, it's adding, it's adding warehouse space and it's adding some manufacturing space, don't see adding a lot of, adding employees or traffic or, so...
One little detail you left out in the history is that the town be zoned, part of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, that, the zoning line used to run, I think it was, it was right up...
Just to the right of building three.
And I think we, we expanded out into here so that those, so that those buildings could occur, and expand the tax base for the contingent as well.
We just have to get that. Works out for everyone.
Well, that was the, the idea of buying the property, a lot of mine originally, was so that I could build to the zone, that, that northern zoning line, right? Gave me another 30 feet of commercial property to use. And then, when I approached the guy, one thing led to the other, and I wound up with 32 acres.
So a lot of that Trudell, is that, a lot of that wetlands back there?
Trudell's, yes, there's, uh...
Yeah, this is...
So that precludes, Charlie, that precludes subdividing or doing any...
Those, you know, those lots, actually, I think...
So the only residential you would do off of Weathersfield Street is in, in the front there? What's the front inch there? It looks like adequate front.
I can, I can show you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's frustrating to see.
The, the possibility of doing something with this would be from there to the street.
Right.
This, we're not going to do anything with. And there's a, like a riverfront area or something that comes to you?
Yeah, I'll draw it on the...
That's, that's Dan Graham's house, and then this is all, well, there's, there's the wetland.
Yeah, that's the wetland.
There's the wetland buffer right there. So all this, this is probably 58 acres of old wetland, right? That was Kurt. I think Kurt wants that. Brent wants me to donate it to the town.
I'm on the other side of those wetland, abutters.
It's probably, it's right, right in...
On the other side of the brook?
Yeah.
It's an old farmer's plant, it's a little stream that runs down into an old farmer's plant, and there's a stream that runs out of it, that runs right about through there. So you have that stream. On this side of, this is kind of interesting, when you get on this side of the stream, the soils get, and you come up onto a knoll, and the soils in this area aren't too bad, and that's why you see that where we put these single family homes in that area. On this side, this gentleman, I don't know your name.
Steve, Steve.
Steve brought up, what about these lots?
Those are all non-budible.
Yeah, those are non-budible. The reason why is when you get on this side of that stream, it's all clay, it's all, and that's why, if they could have been built on it, I think Sandy would have bought them.
I would have, I would have. I had the option, I had the option to buy any one of these lots up to, I guess, up to here, right?
All the ones front in Weathersfield Street?
Yeah.
All these? So what happened was, when I wound up buying this, was I was after the interior in these lots up here, and I was given the option of buying any one of these I wanted for $1,000 more than he owed the town in taxes. And the number was like, generally, $25,000 in taxes per lot. So what I bought was these two to gain access here, and two or three along here, and this.
Alexandra Hathas bought the other lots in front of there, and she owns the stable across the street.
Yeah, so the, the town wound up with, yeah, the town wound up with...
It looks pretty nice.
Yeah, the town wound up with these four, these four have been taken by the town, the town owns them now. I own these two, which is the common drive access, and then the town took by tax, tax title, these two, maybe three, and then auctioned them, right? And the, the guy in the stable bought them. I, they were no interest to me.
Why this, well, I, why do I, I'm just curious, that's interesting.
I think she was gonna use it as a paddock.
Yeah.
Or he wanted to.
Oh, really?
They've been, they've been hated, right?
Additional paddock?
She was going to, but then...
Or for hang or something, or nothing?
She was going to do that, and for one reason or another, she hasn't completed making paddock area out of them, but she keeps mowing on it.
Keeps mowing, it looks really nice now.
Yeah, so that's interesting, that, that you see these little un-budible lots, you know?
So we're thinking that, I'm thinking that if we could develop another house lot down there, probably would, but we haven't explored all the possibilities.
We gotta do some soil testing.
Yeah, and if, if it doesn't, then we'll probably roll it into this next house lot and try to, to, to sell it off that way. I mean, that would allow, that would allow access up the existing driveway into that lot, if somebody wanted to access the lot that way and not use the common driveway.
Yeah.
Because I have rights up the, up the, the common driveway that serviced, that originally went up to Trudell's house...
I remember that.
And to Dan Graham's.
I remember that property.
But right now, I've kind of...
From the Concom days?
Yeah, right now, above Dan Graham's driveway, I, I've, after the firemen got through the house for two months, we tore the house down, ripped up the septic system, took the driveway out, covered it hot dog and everything. The firemen had, the firemen did training in, in the house for two months before I tore it down, so it was pretty much half torn down, but they were done with it.
I don't get a chance like that very often.
Mr. Chairman, that reminds me, the fire chief did email and said that he's holding off on his comments until he can get together with you and tour the rear of the site to just make sure that there's adequate fire access at the rear?
I spoke to the chief about that, yes. I didn't, I didn't know about that conversation, but I spoke to the chief about it because it was brought up at a Concom meeting about fire access around the addition on this building, oh, no, the addition on, on this building.
That's right.
Right?
I want you to go back to the other one.
Hmm?
Go back to the other plan.
Yeah, he flips that one.
Because there's no access around this corner, right? Why, why that comment came up at a Concom meeting, I don't know, but it did. But in talking to the chief on the telephone, he wasn't concerned about it because of the usage and the fact that the building's sprinkled.
Yeah, they're all sprinkled.
They're all, every building's sprinkled.
They're all sprinkled?
Yeah, they're all sprinkled. This building seven has a very similar situation, you can't drive around building seven.
It's, it's, it's less accessible, building seven's less accessible.
Even less, less accessible.
The, that drops off.
Yeah, that's this one.
Yeah, there's a...
Right?
Tension point here.
Right.
And it drops way off there.
It drops off, yeah, I remember. So, Sandy, but we still, I just wanna sign up from, yeah, because when we open the public hearing, we do ask for comments from the other town entities, you know? So we just need a...
I don't see, I don't see that as a natural state.
He said we're gonna be getting intentional, setting it up.
Larry, do you have any comments? Because it's almost safe here.
Well, yeah, I have no, no report as I promised, no report, but what I had hoped to accomplish tonight, as far as I was concerned, was to get some input from the board, which we're doing and getting, I think, input from any abutters, so that when I do my work within the next seven days, I can focus on those things. My, my scope as of this point is, is the drainage review, which is also gonna double for the Conservation Commission. It's going to review this three sheet set of plans and the ones that they submitted for the...
The application, yeah.
Amendment. And it is going to include taking the previous certificates of order decisions that the board has made on site plan special permit on, in 2007, or '99, I think, '07 and '09, and pulling them all together into one, one permit. I believe that when I start to do that, that that's gonna lead me back to maybe some parts of the site to either confirm that it's been done and I don't need to include it as a condition, or that I do, or that perhaps it needs to be changed, as Sandy implied perhaps around building six. So, that's what I intend to do, if the board thinks I should be, you know, doing anything else for this application, then that's what I wanted to hear from that.
That sounds pretty efficient, isn't it? That's fine.
Well, I don't know if you, you intended this, but I'd like, like to take a look at the landscaping, particularly, you know, in light of what we were talking about earlier.
Coming, coming down the second entrance and around building six here.
Yeah, I think you apply.
It looks good.
Don't get me wrong, I have no reason to fix it.
It's all on this plan, I'm sorry for pulling it out a minute ago, but I don't think, I don't think we need to get into that detail. But I think the, the landscaping is all, and I didn't look at each individual planting and it's there enough, the landscaping coming in the second row is beautiful.
Yeah.
I think what probably happened, maybe at the time, was when you were building five, you know, you were staging stuff in the area where building six is, I recall, or building six is, is, is going to be.
Perhaps, yes. There was, there was, there was some stockpiles of earth.
There was some staging there of materials and, materials as well as equipment, and I think it was probably during that time.
Yeah, I think you're right, because it was, it was a while ago, and I think it was right after you started building.
There's not a lot of pine trees.
She may be completely satisfied, as far as I know.
It's about 250 feet, it looks like, from building six to that house.
It's a long ways, most of it is natural.
Yeah.
What was always there.
No, it is situated in...
And I think you're right, it's probably only an issue during the wintertime when the street is probably...
Because you had to deal with a, a number of buffer zones and so forth, and so...
That was excruciating. I mean, we went through it all, right? And it was very disappointing to see that then along comes a buyer. I mean, I went to the extent, because I, you know, I mean, this, this is the same issue that we had with Trudell years ago, about buying a piece of land alongside commercially zoned land, and then saying, oh, well, I didn't know it was commercially zoned. When Pacillas put the sale sign on that house, I sent the real estate agent a certified letter and a copy of the drawings, and urged him to make sure that he included the fact that the house was being sold and it was directly alongside of a commercially zoned property.
Right.
And it never happened. The guy called me up, out of the blue, right? And said, what are you doing? I mean, that was the opening salvo with a phone call.
No.
How do you, how do you deal with that?
It's not the only place it happens in town.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that the, the abut that had the problem with the landscaping was notified, and so they're aware that these modifications are happening.
Yeah, that was part of the reason.
But, but, you know, I guess I need to say this, is that what I'm asking you to approve is literally the distance from where we're sitting down to the fire station, right? I mean, I don't see how it can possibly have any bearing on our discussion.
No, but it also gives, it does give a chance to wrap it up and take a fraction, a number of permits, and just to tie it up, and, and that's your benefit for the future as well.
Well, I mean...
I know you don't look at it that way, but it is.
What's, what's in front of you is pretty much it for what...
It does clean it up, you know, and I think...
And I'm all for cleaning things up, but we have to, I mean, I'm nervous about that idea because it takes stuff that, in my mind, has been long put to bed and creates the possibility of some of this stuff's coming back to the surface in...
Well, why?
I just, unknown.
Permits are permits, I mean, you've read them, you have complied with them.
But the, the idea of taking a permit that addressed issues back in 1998 and '99, and now reopening them to be rolled into this current thing, I mean, first off, bear in mind that Larry's a great guy, but he's, he's in business too, and there's a great expense in what you're proposing here.
I mean, I think he's gonna limit the, I mean, there isn't a huge scope, so, I mean, but the planning board is, projects that go back, the permits are still valid, and, and conditions and permits are valid.
I'm not trying to share the existing permits.
And, you know, we, so, I mean...
What is the expense, great expenditure, is it Larry's?
Well, Larry's gonna have to put a lot of time into do what he just said he was gonna do.
Especially talking about...
Right? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I stand on what I've done up there and what it looks like.
Right, yeah.
I did what I said I was gonna do, and I certainly don't wanna get into an issue about, you know, are there five trees or four trees? And I certainly don't want to get into an issue about, you know, are there five trees or four trees? Or is one look a little peaked and maybe you ought to replace it?
No, I don't think...
I do that on a regular basis.
I don't think he was implying that. I think he was looking at the concepts and the intent and not, you know, every... Let's say, you're missing this species right here.
There's also all sorts of regulations that have changed, okay? And I've been through it with the Conservation Commission over this because, you know, just as you have multiple permits, the Conservation Commission has multiple orders of conditions. Then we've closed them as we've gone along.
Which you have to.
Right. But over the years, there's been different rules applied to a lot of those order of conditions. And some of them, I comply with today's standards, and some of them I don't. And some of them, as the condition of a new permit, has been to bring the condition of the old permits up to current standards.
I don't think we're talking about that.
But, well, but I just want to say that.
No, we're not talking about that. I mean, we... This is a... We have every right to do this and we're doing it. So that's... And we're trying to do it expeditiously. We're very sensitive to the timeline here. I mean, I am, as chairman. Because I understand, you know, what you're up against and... But, you know, it does give... The board voted as such and it opens up the hearing. There's only one abutter here, which is a good thing. Who hasn't, you know, and we have one letter, so I think it's... The abutters have every chance to get feedback and now we just go forward.
Well, that's good. I mean, that's why we are here.
We're done. We just go forward, so... And I think it is... I don't think anybody has a problem with what you're proposing, just pending Larry doing his work, that's all.
Well, and that's all I'm asking. I mean, I'm asking...
Does anybody have a problem with that?
I'm asking for the approval contingent on Larry doing his work. I mean, I don't necessarily need it done in seven days. I'm not sure I should say that, but he had used the term seven days.
Fourteen.
Fourteen days. But, I mean, because that isn't critical path for me. I mean, I'm going to build a detention point out there that is to the specifications of what these two gentlemen agreed to. Whether it's 5,000 square feet or 5,500 square feet, it's no difference to me. As I said, my main concern is moving forward on the critical path of starting a foundation or the design process for the foundation and the design and procurement process for the structural steel.
Right, of course. And towards, yeah, so, I mean, then you just have to get a building permit. I mean, the building inspector has to review it anyway, so...
That's right, but I can't really release engineers to design to get it in front of the building inspector.
Until we vote on the permit, until we have the permit.
Until I'm convinced that I don't have an issue with the dimensions or something, or something else.
That makes sense, otherwise you're paying twice.
Yeah, that's all.
All right, any other comments? When are we gonna meet in front of...
You may want to talk about the next planning.
That's what I meant, that's what I'm asking. Can we look at the calendar here?
There's June 19th, June 26th.
I want to do it in two weeks if we can.
That's the 19th.
And just do it. All right, then we...
Aren't we already here on the 19th?
No?
Oh, okay.
We'll be...
Now we are.
Okay. And that should give adequate time for what has to transpire prior, so we can close it up. All right?
Okay.
Is that fine?
That's fine with me and I'll say if there's anything hanging out at that time, I think it's gonna be of the nature that the board could make the approval subject to resolution of whatever it might be.
I mean, you know, yeah, foresee, I mean, we know the project. We have a chance also, if any members, especially Steve or Chris or anyone that hasn't been out there recently.
Let me ask if anybody wants to come look.
They have to call you.
Give me a call first.
They're gonna do it through Katrina, that's why we have a planner.
Okay.
We have a conduit.
I mean, this, where these additions are going, this is an active site that the buildings are occupied by Ipswich Bay Glass Company. And there's a whole lot happening in the backyard.
Oh, yeah.
They're really, I mean, I was out yesterday and they're really behind Building Three is the entire addition and more could be put there where it's cleared out, where they are parking trucks loaded with glass. And the same thing really behind Building Two. But there really isn't a lot to see out there. And you have to go over the berm and down into the woods to see where the pond's gonna get all the basins.
It's not individuals, when it's not... It would all be through Katrina, so it wouldn't even happen, so...
No, that's fine. I mean, it's just that if somebody shows up there unannounced, someone's gonna ask what they're doing there.
It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman, with the board's permission, can I forward the fire chief's comments to Larry?
Yes. Any other? Just so, I'd like to wrap this up next meeting.
19?
Yeah. Well, we're on 7:30 in time. And that way, if you have it done in seven days, if adequate time...
I really am gonna need to have a minute or two to look at it.
Try me.
Yeah.
I'm not talking, so Larry's gonna hand it in that day before the meeting, a minute before the meeting. And that hasn't typically happened anyways, so...
No, no.
Just keep in touch with our planner and...
Larry, what's gonna happen in that time? You've got water calculations to do?
Yeah, the drainage review, which is for both the planning board and the Conservation Commission. The drainage, just for this proposal, is all I'm gonna look at.
Because we have more impervious surface with the new roots and stuff like that.
Yeah, and it's proposed that all that is gonna be conduit to this new basin.
And it's being done concomitantly or concurrently with the Conservation Commission, right?
Yes.
The Conservation Commission is waiting for Larry's report.
And then gets done, okay? And the stormwater management plan gets done.
It could be, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are the engineers, but it's gonna be the size of that pond.
Yeah, okay.
And because the size of the pond has to be on the drawing because it is in the buffer to the water.
You're gonna have to change a... Is that kind of strange to have it in a detention pond or residential property?
There's a precedent for... Next guy down, Schilling.
That's fine, okay. I... Is that, you know, just doesn't normally happen, right? So Schilling, that's right, Schilling has part of it.
It was done, I mean, Schilling's building was built and modeled after mine. And it was built, it's the same vintage. She was built immediately after mine.
That's not an issue.
Okay, well, anyways, it was done. There's nothing in the zoning that kind of...
Have pre clues to that?
It's kind of silent.
Thanks, Joe.
See you, Larry.
See you, Larry.
Larry, thank you very much.
You know, and it's kind of, you know, detention points get built in residential areas, so it's sort of a...
Right, yeah. So it has the same function, whether it's commercial...
It's not like a parking lot or something.
Right.
So whether it's commercial or residential, it's the same function.
Right, and so, you know, that's a good example.
It's all a lot's water.
It probably, that was the one I could think of right off the top of my head. If I dug through my files, I might find more.
I mean, what could be more appropriate? It's next door.
And that's quite a ways away, too.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for showing me that.
So, Mr. Chairman, 7:30, June 19th?
Correct.
All right, your motion continue here until 7:30.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second by Jake. Is that a... Is that an I, Steve?
Yes.
To continue the hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Just relax.
I'm relaxed.
Briefly, can I have the attention? Oh, you want... Do you have any other questions for Larry before we... I mean, for Charlie? Anybody seen Schilling? I can't remember we did that, too, because I was on the Concom.
Hey, took a look at it, so I...
Charlie, Charlie, can you leave that one?
Sure.
Is that... Is that...
For Schilling? Schilling is... Schilling has expanded since then. Oh, okay. And they've also rezoned that one.
Right.
So two things have happened, but the original approval, it was in... This radius here, that was all commercials. That's the biggest building in town. That's 100 square meters.
Thank you, Charlie.
Those are toys. Those are toys, right? They're all the...
All right, on number two, it's on regular business. Briefly, I just wanted to comment and get comments from board members on a couple of project updates. Jill might as well talk, since you took your time to commit. Jill, we're gonna do it first.
Sure. Good to see you.
And I'm not going to get into, that's why, you know, I don't think all the emails back and forth, but the crux, the salient point is to... Jill Mann represents the developer at Ipswich, at Raleigh Country Club and the residence is at Raleigh Country Club. And we're just trying to get everybody on the same page in terms of operating hours. You know, Jill, and we also have an abutter here, I believe. So there was some misunderstanding, but I don't want to go backwards.
I don't know. I don't know.
It's not that, you know, I'm not gonna read a zillion emails back. But I do appreciate the fact, and I'll say that publicly, that, you know, there has been input and some care by the police to oversee the site in a residential area. The fact that they're responsive, I mean, but it's important that I think our planners worked very well to send emails out to clarify some misunderstandings that passed back and forth from our review agent and from our last meeting. And so, since it isn't really in the special permit and codified, I think we just have to get your input, so...
Essentially, I went back...
Which comes from you, you know, the event put from the owner.
Yeah, and I did. I talked to Ralph DeGeorgio, who was the principal, and everybody knows, well, you two don't know Ralph yet, but my name's Jill Mann. I represent carriage binds and it's covered and said. And we went through a long, arduous process to develop that special permit. And one of the things, yeah, I noticed that there weren't operating hours within them. And we're not looking to do anything that's, you know, harmful or protracted. No, but the thing was, is, you know, on Saturdays, we do look to do a seven to three. Part of the reason is because that's a normal construction time on Saturdays. And when you try to get contractors to work from nine to three, it's an issue because they want to work a full day, not a half day.
I guess part of the issue, and I think that, but I'm gonna speak for, was that what, started what, 6:30?
Well, that shouldn't happen, so I'll make sure.
That's what I want, not...
Yeah, I mean, you know, 6:30, the foundation guys are out there banging away. And I went over and I was like, "Am I hearing this correctly?" So I walked into the golf course.
Can you announce who you are, please?
Joseph Pegliulo, 261 Dodge Road.
Thanks.
So I walked into the golf course just to take a look and I called Ralph, the supervisor, I think his name's Ralph, the supervisor. And, you know, he was surprised, you know, and he said, you know, "I'll take care of it. I'll make sure it won't happen again." And the guy asked me what I was doing and I said, "Workout was nine to... Start time is nine o'clock on Saturdays." He said, "Oh, I'm pretty sure it's seven." I said, "We just went to the meeting. It's nine o'clock." He's, you know, so, and the police, you know, the big trucks started at seven o'clock. And it was loud because they were dumping boulders into the big dump truck. And, you know, we called the police just because, you know, it's Saturday morning and finally a beautiful day. You want to be able to sit outside and have a cup of coffee, read the paper, and it's literally 100 yards away. And they said, "No, nine to three, this is what we have here," or nine to five, I think it was.
Eight, it's seven.
Well, they said on Saturdays, nine to five.
Let's not even get into the exact... That was where the misunderstanding lies. The point is, it was disrupted in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we understand seven o'clock during the week. We get it. It's, you know, the guys have to work, you know, it is what it is. People's up, people are up going to work, going to school a little bit. I mean, Saturday, we're just looking for a little reprieve because it's loud all day and...
You're looking for a little relief on Saturday? I mean, that's...
Yeah.
We don't have to decide that exactly tonight, but I want to get input. You can, but if, you know, I understand from a building, because, you know, I'm, you know... Where, I mean, yeah, I do building, but the point is, we're not in a residential area, you know? I understand where builders are coming from. On Saturdays, they like to get in early and get out early. But it's different. I mean, this is a major project in the midst of a residential area, as far as I can see.
May I speak on this?
Yeah, sure.
Is it necessary that they even work on a Saturday?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, the thing is...
And it is very typical.
People work all week long. They get a lousy two days off a week. That's all they get, two days off a week. They want to relax at home. They don't want to hear that.
But they also want this done quickly.
Well, I know, they want to talk about it because the almighty dollar rules, I understand that. But, you know, you're deserving the quality of life of the residents around there. You know, like I said, lousy two days off a week, and you're gonna listen to that? I'd go out of my mind.
But it is, I mean, Saturdays are typical and normal.
Typical, but it's a residential area.
Typical and normal in every area.
Typical work with constanzas.
Wow, big quarry construction trucks.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, seriously, where do you live?
I live in a development with 55 homes and yes, I was, the fifth home constructed and I lived with it for three and a half years. Yes.
Well, that was your choice, right? Your choice to live there while it did.
It's your, you... You know what, I'm gonna argue with him, but the point is, the special permit doesn't provide the work conditions placed in it. And I don't want to be a jerk about it. We're trying to be respectful and responsible and we won't... Beginning at 6:30 was wrong and that'll never happen again, I can assure you. I just have to tell you that it's outdoor construction, so when we get, you know, storms and we have rain and you can't develop, you can't build, so now you have a more protracted construction scheme. We're trying to get it done quick so that it'll be done and people don't have to deal with it.
So they work nine to five instead of seven to three? I mean, what's on a Saturday?
You can't work nine to five on Saturdays. Those aren't normal construction hours. They really aren't. The normal construction hour anytime is seven o'clock in the morning. That's typical. That's when they work.
In a residential area with those large trucks and...
Always. It's the typical, it is standard operating. I mean, you can go anywhere. They all start...
Why do the residents have any say in any of it? They're like, you know, nothing's been given any consideration to any of the residents.
Oh, we have given tremendous amount of consideration to the residents. Trust me.
No, but it has happened. It's the same, in all due respect, I mean, we have subdivisions that have been going on for 21 years. And the people have been, you know, I won't get into, I mean, and it hasn't exactly been pleasant for a developer who stretches it out for 20 years and continues to do, you know, six days a week or even sometimes seven. And it's not as loud, this is a larger site, so I understand, this is... The site work is going to be done. I don't think that kind of stuff is gonna continue much longer because the quicker the site work gets done, the site work is the loudest, most disruptive, dustiest, muddiest, worst. When that's done and the site work is done and the infrastructure's done, it's not gonna be any different than if you had a subdivision like, you know, the cul-de-sac, you know, the one you live on. When they were building those, what, five houses? And doing all that fill. I mean, were you there when they were building? There was a lot of fill.
I thought so.
Yeah, I mean, that was not, that didn't look like that. It dropped into it.
I mean, but you've seen it, too. It's come a long way.
Are they... They initially were gonna do about six units or something like that. Is that gonna continue quicker?
Well, that's good news, is we already sold 12 units.
That's what I predicted.
So it's gonna be...
I predicted it, so... I would like, comparing this to a normal development that could have happened here would be 45, I think it was, houses.
Thirty-six.
No, before...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Without the golf course.
Without the golf course.
And not open space with the golf course.
Space, we would have had a much longer period of time.
And I agree, it's not, I mean, Raleigh has some interesting zoning, which we're trying to improve, but they're outlying, there are businesses all over town that run seven days a week right in the middle of residential areas in the outlying district. With Trucking on Central Street, you know, I don't want to mention names, but, and it's not, there are, the zoning is... Outlying district has businesses in it. And it's not...
Yeah, but I don't know if it compares to...
But I'm just saying.
Seven o'clock on a Saturday, the kids can't even sleep. You can't have the windows open because they're dumping...
But I don't, there's a certain amount of construction time that's going to happen, that's going to be disrupted no matter what they do. I would like to see a compromise and to see the developer think about this. I don't like the fact, you know, seven o'clock at night on a weekday is too late in my mind.
And we talked, Ralph, we talked about that.
Much, much too late, much too late. Five o'clock on a Saturday in my mind is much too late.
And we've agreed not to do it in that.
And I'm not, I'm talking noise-wise. I mean, I got the sense that, yeah, it closes down at 3:30 or 4 o'clock and then they're doing loud maintenance work until 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00. And that's also disruptive, I mean...
We have no, you know, honestly, the end of the day, we can condense it because it's easier to send men home early, and women, home early than it is to start late. It is very difficult to start late.
Especially ones that have commutes.
It just, you know, we can send them home early.
Trucks going down the street at seven at night, I think, is inexcusable. Trucks doing their thing at 6:30 on a Saturday is inexcusable. I mean, I'd rather see a compromise like eight o'clock, but I understand, at least bring it, I mean, just consider it. I'd like to see reduced hours on Saturday. I mean, he runs his own company, but if he was... I'd like to see reduced hours on Saturday. I mean, he runs his own company, but if he wasn't, he'd be paying overtime. He wouldn't wanna do it anyway.
But he, oh, he subs out a tremendous amount, like the roadway, the top, the pavers that we sub.
By rushing, so he's paying overtime on Saturday?
We pay, no, you don't pay overtime. That's what I mean. You don't pay overtime. Seven to three, you don't pay overtime. After three, you pay overtime.
Right, if it goes later.
Yeah, which is why if we change, we have to have a full day. So, you, you try to get them to do nine to five, which is worse on a Saturday. And that is overtime. And then during the week, and we, we can cut it back in the afternoon easier. So, if you're asking me, will we agree to do seven to three on a Saturday? Yeah, we'll, we'll agree to do seven to three. I talked to Ralph.
Okay, look at eight. Some people got at least-
The problem, they're gonna, these men are all out. This is their normal work hours. We get deliveries at that time. It's, it's not, it, it won't happen. You were gonna, he's gonna get community calls constantly. And we're gonna try and we're just gonna get shut down all the time because it's normal operating procedure. So, we're gonna send a new contractor in. They're gonna go out. Ralph's gonna tell them the time they're gonna go because everybody starts at seven. Mass Highway starts at seven. Everybody starts at seven.
Yeah, but not six thirty. I don't wanna, trucks running.
I feel bad that they started six thirty. It's not normal.
Trucks idling, trucks running, trucks making noise before seven.
They shouldn't even be at the site before seven. And I agree. I mean, if you have like, you know, a guy coming in his pickup truck because, you know, he, he ended up getting out of the house early, so B, it's it there. But I don't, I don't want to see people coming at six thirty dropping off either from, you know, the big, huge trucks.
How about weekdays?
It's seven o'clock on weekdays too. You mean at night. I mean, what if we stopped, the only thing is, they have to wrap up. So, what if we said we'd, we'd no more, you know, access, well, we'd wrap up by six the absolute latest? Because that gives us the ability to leave. Because they do work, they will work until a minimum of five, and they need to wrap up.
Yeah, but they shouldn't, you know.
I mean, most of the time, they can be done. I know you wanna say something, by five.
And I, I do wanna say something. You know, we said that whether it was an oversight or intentional, there was no hours put into this special permit. That doesn't mean that we just necessarily therefore impose whatever they want. And I know you're saying the norm and usual is seven, you know, the norm and usual is there to be modified. I mean, no, we don't have to just follow that, that guideline. Seven to five during the weekday, that may make sense. But Saturday, it's a different ballgame. You know, it's, it is a residential neighborhood. I am in a butter. And I can tell you, six forty-five, the trucks start. They don't start rolling around, but they gotta warm themselves up. You know what? Six forty-five, you can hear a truck that might be on the, on River's Edge on Emily Lane. And, and, you know, that's my new alarm clock. So, I'm well aware of what time they're starting and, and I can also tell what time they go into gear and start rolling. And, you know, but what you're telling me is, you could, because we didn't specify what time you're gonna start and what time you're gonna stop, then theoretically, you can start anytime you want. In fact, you might never stop at all. You can go twenty-four hours a day. And I think that that is where we're getting beyond reasonable.
And I never said that.
No, I know you didn't. But you did say you're gonna do what's usual and customary.
And usual and customary is about seven.
But, but you're, but we're not talking, you know, we can talk about all the different areas that exist in Raleigh where different things occur. This is a farm community. The only business that was ever there was a golf course. We hear the swat of a golf ball, and now we hear the heavy equipment. I agree. We wanna see this done as quickly as possible because that's when the disruption ends and that's when life gets back to normal.
Just enable it to get done more quickly.
Absolutely. But, but you know what? You know, you've already said that it's a shortened day. Well, shorten it up in the morning and lengthen it out in the afternoon. It's not gonna change. You're talking about people commuting to and from work? Saturdays, there's no traffic. Commute ought to be real easy, okay? Get there at seven, get there at eight. What difference does it make? I understand. People want, worry about, you know, I wanna get home too. But maybe they, you know, choose, no one told them they have to work on Saturdays. All I'm saying is, if you're gonna be reasonable and, and if what you're saying is, we come here to accommodate and, and try to appease the abutters, here's an opportunity to do it. And all we're saying is, maybe eight o'clock on Saturday might make sense. Or at seven thirty.
We just want the ability to enjoy our house, enjoy the morning when it's a beautiful morning, listen to the birds. You know, Sunday morning was great. Saturday morning, they're dumping those things and it's just like, are you kidding me? I can't even have one day with the door open, reading the paper or sitting on the back deck, drinking a cup of coffee for, give me an hour or two before the kids get up. Nothing. Can't get it. You know, what about-
On a Saturday, you're saying?
On a Saturday. What, I mean, like I said, you gotta get up and go to work, the whole bustle of the week. You know, kids going to school, all of that. And then, you know, you get it. You understand. They're out there drilling for blasting at seven o'clock in the morning, and that's pretty loud a hundred yards away. That ended. I talked to Ralph. He said it should be one more, one or two more days. And it ended. You know, he, you know, I was just playing.
That's what I'm saying. There's gonna be phases in the construction. I don't think, I think you gotta find it's not going to be.
We're looking for just a little respite on the weekends. You know, it's, it's becoming that time where you wanna be able to enjoy your yard and your house and sit outside. Like I said, what if you have a, you know, just enjoy yourself after a long week of working? You know, everybody has a choice. Those guys choose to be laborers and they, and they work weekends. I don't. And I wanna be able to enjoy my house. And we're just looking for a little respite. That's all.
Do you have any comments?
I think your request is reasonable. I really do. And I think starting at eight o'clock start at Saturday would be a reasonable compromise.
But it's, it's, an eight o'clock start is an abnormal time. They're still gonna get there early and then go until four o'clock. And trust me when I tell you, it's gonna be an issue. It comes to the end of the day.
In construction, all jobs aren't normal, especially if they're not unionized. They're not normal.
I disagree. I do this an awful lot and there are, you can admit it, they're standard hours.
You can't tell a subcontractor that if he wants a job, he has, he has to start at eight and that's, I mean, you know.
When I, when I do a-
Well, you can, you can try.
When I do a multi-month project, I mean, I can tell them when, I mean, sure, there is customary hours.
You can try. You know how it is. You can try. And these, these guys are gonna show up when they normally show up and they're gonna leave at three o'clock. And, and that's gonna be our problem. I mean-
They're gonna show up, they're gonna show up when the, what the contract says.
Yeah, I can't imagine. You're saying that the-